So I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Ms. Hamblin for a roll call.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Michael Marks.
Here.
Bruce Dawson.
Here.
Jesse Lugo. Lee Pagni.
Here.
Miranda Schubert.
Here.
Irma Duran. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay, very good. To those in the virtual audience, I have some preliminary comments I need to make first, and then we will proceed to the hearings. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Tucson's Board of Adjustment. This meeting is being recorded, and by joining the meeting, you are given consent to that recording. We have three hearings on the agenda today plus one additional matter. After the first case is introduced, staff will present its staff report. Board members may then ask staff questions after the applicant or his or her representative will have time to speak. Other people, first those in favor and then those in opposition, will have an opportunity to speak as well. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. Throughout this period, board members may ask questions of the applicant and other speakers. When all of that testimony is completed, the board will close the public hearing, discuss the matter, and then vote on a motion made and seconded by board members. All of those who wish to speak will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. All of those wishing to speak other than the applicant should indicate that wish and/or your name and address in the chat feature. All presentations today must be directed solely to the board and not to staff or members of the audience, and all must be related to the case at hand and not to any other matter. For those who wish to speak, we ask that you be brief and to the point. Repetition of testimony already given by other witnesses is not necessary. If necessary, I will invoke a time limit for all speakers. Please remember that all testimony given today must be given under oath. And a reminder, please be sure to mute yourself and turn your camera off unless you're addressing the board. The decision of the Board of Adjustment may be appealed to the Superior Court of Pima County by filing a complaint for special action within the Pima County Superior Clerk's office within thirty days of the board's decision. For additional information on this filing process, please contact the Superior Court Clerk's Office or an attorney after today's public hearing. At this time, I am going to ask city staff to raise their right hands, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Then let's proceed to the first case. And Mr. Castro, I will turn it over to you to provide us with a staff report. Or Mr. Berger, I apologize, one or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Our first case today is C-10-22-08, Ferentz Residence New Carports, Anthony Ferentz, 1700 East Ninth Street, R2. The applicant's property is an approximately sixty-five-hundred-square-foot lot, zoned R2 residential, and is developed with two detached, single-family dwellings. The previous are constructed to carports without prior zoning approval. The applicant is requesting the following variants. One, allow the existing north detached carport to remain as constructed with a reduced front-street perimeter yard setback from twenty feet to six foot one inch as measured to the north line. Two, allow the existing north detached carport to remain as constructed with a reduced side perimeter setback from eight to four feet nine inches as measured to the east lot line. Three, allow the existing north detached carport to remain as constructed in the buildable area between the principal building and the front-street lot line. And four, allow the existing southwest carport to remain as constructed with a reduced side-street perimeter yard setback from ten feet to zero feet as measured to the west lot line, all as shown on the submitted plans. The engineering section of Planning and Development Services Department has no objection or adverse comments. Planning and Development Service staff has no objection to applicant's requested variants subject to the following conditions. A, no motor vehicle parking in the area between the north detached carport curb. And B, carports shall not be enclosed. It is the opinion of staff that there are special circumstances applicable to the property that granting of the variances will not be detrimental to public welfare or injurious to other property improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located, and that the variants requested is the minimum needed to afford relief and the least modification possible of the UDC provisions which are in question. To date, we've received a total of two written approvals and zero protests. For the record, board members have been provided copies of the comments. Mr. Chair and members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much, and I personally don't have any questions for you, but I want to ask the other board members present if any one of them has a question of Mr. Castro. We're hearing none. Then, Mr. Castro, thank you, and we'll move on to the petitioner at this point, and so my question is, is the petitioner present?
Yes. Hello, I'm Anthony Ferentz.
First, raise your right hand, and do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Anthony Ferentz, 1700 East Ninth Street.
Okay, Mr. Berger, why don't you proceed and provide us with a presentation explaining and justifying the variance request?
Thank you. Let me share my screen. All right. Can everyone see my screen?
I see it.
Perfect. So I purchased the home back in 2021, and the previous owner had built the carports, and they were already there. And I asked them if they were permitted, and they told me that they were. So when I went to go request some permits to make some additions to my front property, the house in my front yard, I wanted to extend that up to the wall of the back house, and they told me that the carports were not permitted. So here's a picture of my front carport that is going with the front property, and then I also have a picture of my carport that is attached to the second structure, to the guesthouse.
Okay.
So the variance I'm requesting is for the front yard placement of the structure and the setback reduction, and then also for the guesthouse, the setback reduction. I sent the letter out to discuss the variance request, and I only got one email back, and it was in support. And then also, I included some pictures of precedents. The first picture, 1659th Street, this is my next-door neighbor. My carport faces their carport, and we both have one that's attached to the house and going up to our wall, and then we have a sidewalk, so that's the same situation for both of us. And then this is another person on Ninth Street where they have an attached carport. And then here's some additional neighborhood precedents where here's one where the carport is in the front yard. And one more, and those are all on Ninth Street.
Okay. So does that complete your comments?
Yes, thank you.
So let me ask a question too in the purposes of maybe repeating some of what you said to just make sure I've heard it correctly. The structures affected by the setback are not new, they've existed for some time and sometime prior to your purchase of the property, and that all of this matter has come to come to light because of a review of the building plans for the addition that is between the main house and the secondary dwelling. That's correct, right?
Yes, that is correct.
And you have no neighbors that oppose the request?
No, I do not have any neighbors that oppose.
Okay. I am satisfied with the situation. I want to open it up to any other board members who may have a comment or a question at this point. Are there any? Not hearing any. I assume that nobody has anything to say. I want you to sit pat for just a minute, and let me, for the record, ask, is there anybody else present here today to speak on this case other than the petitioner? And I'm not hearing anyone. I'm assuming nobody is here to speak either in favor or in opposition to this request. There's no need for the petitioner for any period of rebuttal since there's nothing to rebut. So unless there's objection from one or more members of the board, I'm going to close the hearing and ask the board for discussion, comments, or emotion in favor or to deny the request. So this is now in the hands of the other board members. Mr. Dawson, do you have something you want to say at this point?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would move, in a case of Ferentz Residence New Carport, 1700 East Ninth Street, that I move we grant the following variance in the case, C-10-22-08. One, allow the existing north detached carport to remain as constructed with a reduced front-street setback set from twenty feet to six feet one inch as measured from the north lot line. Allow the existing north detached carport to remain as constructed with a reduced side perimeter setback from six feet to four feet nine as measured from the east lot line. Allow the existing north detached carport to remain as constructed in the buildable area between the principal building and the front-street lot line. And four, allow existing southwest carport to remain as constructed with reduced side-street perimeter yard set from ten feet to zero feet as measured to the west lot line, all as shown on the submitted plans. Subject to the following conditions: No motor vehicle parking in the area between the north detached carport and the curb. The carports shall not be enclosed. The evidence presented board shows that there are special circumstances which are not self-imposed, which are applicable to the property, and will support the granting of variants requested.
Okay.
That would be my motion.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Dawson. Is there a second to that motion?
I will second. This is Lee.
Okay, Mr. Pagni, thank you. So we have a motion that has been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. That completes that first item. And Mr. Ferentz, thank you very much. Good luck to you. You're excused at this point.
Thank you.
So let us move on to the second case on the agenda, which is the Moss case. So if I could ask staff for the report on that case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. The next thing we have before the board is case C-10-22-09, Moss RV Garage, Brandon and Dusty Moss, 11,001 East Old Spanish Trail, SR zoning. Before I read into record the staff report, I wanted to remind Mr. if you wanted to provide the applicant the opportunity for a continuance or to plead with the hearing based on what we discussed during study session.
Well, let's do that right off the bat. Let me ask, is Mr. Moss in the virtual audience, and is he available to speak at this point?
Yes, sir, I am available, but David Garcia, the architect, is also a bit pure and available, and he was going to speak.
So Mr. Garcia is representing you on this matter. Do you want me to adjust my comments to him? Before I move on, though, we're going to ask you a basic question of, do you want to continue this matter? Or do you want to go forward with the hearing? And we are asking that, given the information we were presented just before this hearing at our study session, the information provided by staff, which indicated they had just recently received new information from other staff members that this case will require a grading permit in addition to an NPPO waiver, and that the grading plan will have to be approved, well, once the grading plan is reviewed, the exact location of this structure might have to be modified. And that could affect the variance request or our review of the variance request. So given that information, we want to ask you directly or your representative, first, are you aware of that new information, and secondly, do you want to proceed with the hearing anyway, or do you want to agree to a continuance at the outset?
David, do you want to respond to that?
Sure. This is David Garcia, and we, yeah, just learned about this information just a short time ago, and we've discussed it a little bit. But our first inclination is to go ahead with the variance request. I responded to Mark Castro regarding some of the concerns about the grading permit and and also NPPO. I do not think that there are any circumstances that would require the building to be moved, and so I think that's the reason why we would like to proceed with the hearing today.
Okay, that is certainly, you're right, and certainly we will proceed accordingly. So given that, we ask you to sit back for a few moments, and we'll go back to Mr. Castro and ask him to proceed with his staff report and speak to this subject of the grading plan and how it could affect the location of the building in question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is going to case C-10-22-09, Moss RV Garage, Brandon and Dusty Moss, 11,001 East Old Spanish Trail. The applicant's property is an approximately 3.76-acre residential lot zone SR and is developed with a single-family residence and detached accessory structure. The applicants are proposing to construct a new detached RV garage. The applicants are requesting the following variances. One, allow the detached garage to be constructed with an increased height from twelve feet to eighteen feet eight inches as measured design grade to the midpoint between the even ridge of the roof. And two, allow the combined total gross floor area of all accessory structures 200 square feet larger to exceed fifty percent of the combined total gross floor area of the principal structure, all as shown on the submitted plans. In related plan reviews, the engineering and landscaping sections of Planning and Development Services have noted that the site lies within the environmental resource and hillside development zone overlays and are subject to NPPO and grading standards. As such, conditions have been applied to the various requests to ensure the project meets those standards. Planning and Development Services staff have no objection to the applicant's requested variances subject to the following conditions. A, an NPPO waiver shall be submitted along with the resumetal of the plans. And B, prior to the issuance of a building permit, an approved grading plan shall be required. It is the opinion that the proposal does not constitute a granting of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone and would not be detrimental to public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood, and is the minimum necessary to afford relief. Today, we have received a total of two written approvals and one written protest. For the record, board members have been provided copies of all the comments. Mr. Chair and members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I just want clarification, if I could, regarding the NPPO waiver. Has a native plant preservation plan been submitted? Or are you just suggesting that the waiver is the likely route to take, and so therefore it needs to be resolved before a permit can be issued?
Mr. Chair and members of the board, that is most likely the option that's going to be available based on comments from the landscaping section. The landscape, the NPPO waiver would be to, it applies to areas that are going to be disturbed during construction and development, and I believe that the thought was that the NPPO waiver would be the best route.
And is that possibly because of the limited area that will be disturbed?
I believe so.
Okay. And then as far as the grading plan, is that something that would always be required, or is it merely required because it's in an overlay zone?
So, Mr. Chair, as mentioned before, this site lies within the hillside development zone. One of the standards that applies to this project is any new development must provide a grading plan. One of the concerns along with that is that the engineer also noticed that there is a a wash that goes through the property, and the proposed driveway does cross this new, or this wash, it's an unnamed wash. So there could be a potential for, you know, a hydrology report could be required to identify whether this is a regulatory wash or not. So there are unknowns at this point right now until plans have been submitted so that the engineer section can review.
But given the HDZ status, is there a limit to the amount of grading and a limit to the amount of cut and fill?
I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. We can check here. Give me just a moment. So I'm not finding anything that specifies that there is an exact limit on grading. And I can just read you that section real quick here. It says, "Project subject to the provisions of the HDZ ordinance shall have grading plan approved by the engineer or designing. Review of a grading plan may occur concurrently with the review of a subdivision site plan or base plan."
Okay, so maybe not any restriction on the amount of grading. So, Mr. Castro, could you kind of summarize what the possible reasons for moving or relocating the location of this structure in question might be, given the requirement for a grading plan?
I think maybe it would come up during a review of the grading plan or the hydrology report where just that the location is not suitable for development of a structure, and it may be required to be located away from a wash or you know, located to somewhere where there's more stability. That's my best guess, but if there's and, yeah, please understand that that's not a hundred percent sure.
Okay. Well, thank you. Let's ask other board members if they want to or have a question for you at this point. Are there any questions by board members? I don't hear any. So I will ask the petitioner to reappear, even though he previously indicated Mr. Garcia will be speaking for the most part. I'd like to swear both parties in. Could both? Uh, for the most part, I'd like to swear both parties in, uh, or could both? Are are you in the same room or you're both, you're in separate rooms, but uh. You can become uh, visible. Would you raise your right hands and you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I use.
Okay, thank you. Could I ask each? To state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Brandon Moss, uh. One one zero zero. One east Old Spanish Trail, Tucson, Arizona, eight five seven four eight.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Garcia?
David Garcia, twenty-two East Ventura, here in Tucson.
Okay, thank you. And I assume, Mr. Garcia, you're gonna speak on behalf of Mr. Uh, Moss, so why don't you proceed?
I will do that. Um, I did want to uh, uh, address a couple of things right off the bat in regards to the information that we learned. Uh, uh. Just shortly before this meeting and that was the, uh, there could be. A requirement for uh, NPPO waiver and then also grading plan. Uh, my current site plan does have grading. Uh, on it and um, and we were aware of the wash that uh, is on the site that it appears on Pima maps. Uh, but it is uh. Uh, it appears to have a very low CFS. And uh, and we are far enough away from that, so I do, I really don't think there's gonna be any issues. Kind of an answer to your question that you asked earlier about having to move it. Or having to deal with uh, grading restrictions. Uh, I think the building will be able to be placed exactly where it is. Uh, so I'll go, I wanted to get that right out in front, uh, but I'll go ahead and talk about the two requests that we're making today. Uh, they are uh, for the building height, uh, as the UDC states, uh, the building maximum height is twelve feet. Uh, we are at uh, eighteen feet and that is uh. Uh seventeen foot eve height and a nineteen foot high ridge height, uh, and that was discussed in the public meetings when we talked to. Uh, when we made our presentation. Um, the second uh, request is actually for the square footage. Uh, we, the allowable uh, per the UDC is fifty percent of the main structure. Uh, the main structure is a little over sixty-eight hundred square feet. And we're exceeding that uh, by about seven hundred and ninety uh, square feet, uh, so we're going over by about eleven percent. Um, it should be explained that the reason that we have the, both the height. And the size of the building is because of an RB. Uh, that uh, Mr. Moss wants to store on uh, in in this building. Uh, let me, am I allowed to share the screen right now?
Sure, if you can.
Okay. Uh, here is an aerial here. And um, you can see the property boundaries here and then the old Spanish Trail on the south side. Uh, here's the existing main residence, a swimming pool. And existing uh, workshop and then this is the RV location. Uh, in this area here is where we plan to uh, build.
Can interrupt? Uh, I think you're presuming you are sharing the screen. It has not appeared that way on my monitor.
Okay. What do you see?
Uh, here we see you. We see you, David.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
There you go.
Uh, okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
So here is an aerial of the uh, of the property. I'll start back over again. On the south side here is the old Spanish Trail. Here is the uh, main structure, the, the main house, which is about sixteen hundred square feet, the swimming pool. An existing um, workshop and then here is the RV. Uh, the um. Uh, two uh, doors that uh, are being utilized uh, for the uh, new building are fourteen feet high. The roll-up doors uh, are, take up another two foot of space and that's how we arrived at the height of the building that we have. Um. The uh, RV itself is a, is about forty-four uh, feet long. He intends to store that RV there. He also has a trailer and a couple of vehicles that are having to be stored outside and would like to stick. With those also in this new uh, RV storage building in this location here. Um. I should uh, point out that uh, the code does allow for this structure. Uh, to be attached to the main structure, uh, and it would not require a variance because then the extra accessory structures do not exceed the maximum allowable. And uh, the height i- is not an issue because the height for a main structure is much higher than the quote feet. Uh, but as you can see from the aerial here. Uh, there is an existing swimming pool here. There's a garage here with garage doors. Uh, the location of the property near the north property line and the west property line are fairly close, so there's not enough. Room around the existing residence to be able to achieve that. So that is one of the main reasons for citing this in this location here. Um, uh, in order to mitigate that, what we are doing is uh, let me uh, open up the uh.
If I can. Ask before you leave that screen, actually this one. This really does help with the question I was gonna ask. Is you pointed out generally where the new structure would be, but you haven't shown. The access from the existing. Driveways. To that new structure. Could you kind of? Point to how you're gonna access that structure?
Yes, the, so the openings, the, the uh, structure will sit here. Let me, let me open this up so that you can see. So the, oh, here's where the new structure will be. Here's where the openings are. And in relation to that aerial that you just saw, here's the ex- existing shop building. Here's the existing main house. Uh, so you can see there's a driveway here and then uh, the existing driveway. That is in this location will stay in that same, in that same area. See this existing driveway here? Uh, so. This site plan uh, shows the existing structures like that aerial does. It shows some of the existing vegetation that's out there. Uh, but also what's added is the topography. And as you can see on the further south adjacent to Old Spanish Trail is the highest part of the site. And as you progress to the north. Uh, the contours step down. These are two-foot uh, intervals. And the lowest part of the site is right here in the middle north end of the site. Uh, you can see by these contours here, there's existing drainage that runs along here. Uh, actually uh, is around here and this is the, the lowest part of uh. Uh, Mr. Moss's site and and it, it kind of is a, a gathering place for all of the, the site drainage that occurs. So all of that will continue just as it uh, as it is today. Um, so. Uh, using the topography, if you. Uh, measure from this point down here, there's about a six-foot drop in elevation. From the street level to the location of the new building. Um, we feel that that's really gonna help mitigate this uh, height, uh. If, if the building is eighteen feet tall and you drop six feet, it, it will appear to be. Uh, only twelve feet just by its sighting and putting it uh, further to the north end of the property. Uh, in addition to that, there's some existing vegetation and new vegetation that we would use to screen it. Uh, and and that's just really taking into consideration some of the neighbors' concerns. Uh, to the east property, to the uh, to the northeast. It is also seventy-five feet away from that north or that eastern property line. Uh, about a hundred and seventy-five feet from the right of way. And uh, and still pretty ample amount of space between the uh, the north property line and, and the building itself. Um. The um. Uh, in addition to that, um. We um. Are going to be using muted colors. And uh, so for the most part, it will blend uh, pretty nice. We won't be using any bright, you know, a bright purple color or anything along those lines. Um. Um. There are a couple of other things I wanted to make note of here. Um. We did receive a uh. A protest from one of the neighbors uh, explaining that um. There aren't any structures similar to this, but uh. Let me uh, grab, grab this. This is the location of uh, Mr. Moss's property here. And what I've done is the circled areas, these are all uh, neighbors that are pretty close. And um. These are existing structures that uh, are on their uh, properties that are uh, very close, uh. Some of these are about twenty-eight hundred square feet, fourteen feet tall. And uh, much closer to Old Spanish Trail. Here's another one that is uh. Only about half of, the nearest intersection, there's Milpanee Way and Old Spanish Trail. Uh, this particular um, owner has two metal building structures on his property. Uh, that are about uh, pretty close to the same height, fourteen feet and twelve feet high, about uh, twenty-eight hundred and two thousand square feet. Uh, here's another one that's about three thousand square feet, uh, the same type of root pitch and, and, and uh, roll-up doors. Uh, here's another location with a much taller building. This one's about uh, sixteen feet tall. And uh, you can see they still even utilize some of the RV storage on the outside. Uh, here's another one on Pinell Vista. Uh, this structure here is about sixty-four hundred square feet, about eighteen feet tall. Uh, it's about uh, a hundred and ten feet from Stella Road. And then here's the main structure. You can see it uh, it exceeds the size of the main structure. And still has RVs parked outside. Uh. Here are our elevations which indicate the eve height at seventeen feet. Uh, we do have some windows on the north side and we do have two roll-up doors. Uh, that, that show um, that will accommodate the um, the uh, the RV. Uh, so one of the bays will accommodate the RV, the other one will be a trailer and some other vehicles as Mr. Moss has indicated in our, our conversations. He's had an issue with uh, pack rats out there. They've uh. Uh, gotten into the RV vehicles and some of the other vehicles and so it's been a real issue. It was, it was actually. Brought up in the public meeting. We talked about that, uh, that seems to be a kind of an issue. With a lot of these properties out here that are adjacent to the desert. And um. Uh, it, it's one of the main reasons that he would like to. To build this uh, RV storage building. Um. So I, I think one of the things that we wanted to make sure and address too that is um. Uh, we are doing uh, what we can to mitigate the, the impact to. Uh, the neighbors and uh, by placing it on a lower grade, by putting it further back on the property. Uh, by you utilizing existing veg- uh, vegetation and new vegetation. And uh, and not uh, making it stand out with uh, bright colors. And I think that was pretty much everything that I wanted to cover.
Um, let me ask you a question or two, um. You, you spoke to the. Uh, grade differential between the proposed building location and Old Spanish Trail. And you provided uh, information that uh. Um, demonstrated that uh, the uh, the impact was gonna be lessened because of that uh, falloff of the uh, of the grade. But can you speak to the grade differential between that? Building location and the. Property to the east. The property uh, whose owner has protested. And uh, how that uh. Uh, the, the uh. Contours at that point are, relate to uh, the contours of the uh. Of the home. And nearby, and surrounding area on that adjacent lot.
Yeah, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I, I sure can. Uh, so as you can see by the, the topography here. Uh. Here are the numbers. This is twenty-nine seventy. Our finished floor is going to be at twenty-nine sixty. So from this contour to the building, it's about ten feet lower. And, and you can also see as. As you approach further east. This direction here. Uh, the contours are going up, so the adjacent neighbor. Is on the highest uh. Uh, point of this block here between Mel- uh, Melpanee and the next street. Uh, on Old Spanish Trail. They, they actually will sit up. Um. Their finished floor is gonna be. Uh, ten feet higher. Than our finished floor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I mean, um. It would be, I think, another issue if it was the opposite direction. If, if we were sitting on twenty-nine seventy and they were at twenty-nine sixty. That would surely block views and, and stand out a lot more than we are. In the opposite direction, being ten feet lower than their finished floor.
Okay, well, that actually is quite interesting, um. Did you speak with this uh, property owner? So you, you, I presume you had a neighborhood meeting, is that right?
We did have a neighborhood meeting. We actually had two. The first one, we had some technical issues and um. Uh, people tried to get on and uh, we had some problems with go-to meeting. And uh, so it didn't, uh, it didn't pan out, so we scheduled a second one. Uh, on the second uh, meeting, we didn't have a very big turnout. We actually had someone representing someone else. And uh, and had some discussions with that particular person. Uh, but there was some follow-up from the uh, from Mr. Burns, who is the adjacent neighbor. And um, there was some correspondence be, between he and I. He asked some general questions about the. The uh, the, the material of the, of the building, the colors, the height. Uh, and those types of issues, but uh, it just went uh, back and forth. There weren't uh. Uh. There was no mention of uh, his being against this uh, project, uh, so we were um. A little bit surprised to hear about it and, and there were probably at least two or three conversations that we had via email.
Okay. Um. You indicated that you're gonna vegetate the uh. The uh, building or, or, or surrounding area around the building. And that you're going to. Restrict the uh. Color of the building to what you referred to as muted, but. I wonder if you. Basically were, were referring to earthen tones. And. To whatever extent. You. You meant by those restrictions. Would you be agreeable to specific language that could be? Attached to a variance approval?
Uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I do not, but I would like to at least uh, get an, an opinion from Mr. Moss and, and see if he has any issues with that.
Okay, what, you, you want him to speak on this like? At this point?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Moss, if you're willing and able, go ahead.
So, Mr. Marxer, you saying um. So my plan was I have an existing metal roof. That is a. Light gray color. My plan was to match that building to that existing metal roof. So that the, the two colors were the same. So that my. My house, I have an existing, uh, on the existing house is a metal roof.
And what, what color is that painted?
That is uh. I think it's called charcoal gray, um. So it's kind of that, I guess, kind of that color right there.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so that's got like a low reflectivity.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, so. So a color similar, if not identical to the color of the. Existing metal, existing building that you. That is attached, that, that's an attachment to the main structure, right?
Yeah, so that is actually my, the uh. Yeah, that's the. It is the house. So there's three sloped roofs on, well, four sloped roofs on the house and it's all four of those now. They are uh, gray color.
Okay. Okay, and then what about the vegetation? The display that uh, Mr. Garcia showed us. Indicated trees uh, in the amount of maybe five. Uh. Around that, the perimeter of that uh, new structure. I don't know if he could, you can bring that exhibit back up. One, two, three, four, five. Um. Is that something that you can commit to? And would be agreeable? To in terms of a condition attached to a, to a variance approval?
Yes, sir. I, I would, I would agree to the condition that it, the color of the building matched my house and that we would plant a, a minimum of five trees.
And so can we be a little more specific? Uh, the size of the tree, are they fifteen gallon or are they twenty-five gallon?
I, I think if we could make those uh, uh. I I think if we could make those fifteen gallon trees and 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 go with a faster growth tree. I think within a couple of years, you would really see the impact.
And then we're talking about a desert tree like a palo verde or a mesquite?
Probably, yes.
Okay, is there anything you would want to add to that that condition? I don't want to overly restrict you and I'm not guaranteeing you that the other board members are going to want to go in this route, but if they do. I think we're looking at a requirement that be that there be five trees along the the southeast and and easterly sides of of that new building. Fifteen gallon minimum. Desert native vegetation. If that is agreeable, I'd like to know that because I would support a condition for the purposes of masking or screening the structure to some extent from the view of the of the adjoining property owner.
So, Mr. Marks, I would be agreeable to that. There are some existing trees already between where the building is going to be going and the neighbors, the neighbor's house. But if I would agree to planting at least five trees, yeah.
Okay, very good. That's all I have at this point. Let me turn to other board members and do any others have any questions of Mr. Moss or Mr. Garcia?
Yes, Bruce Dawson here, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Mr. Moss, thank you for hiring an architect to help you out on this. And I but I am curious about this extra driveway. What what's the purpose of that?
So so the my trailer and my truck together are over sixty foot long. So to be able to actually be able to get the the trailer in and backed into that or into the garage, the RV garage, I would need that room to be able to turn that vehicle.
Okay, thank you. That's was just curious. It seemed like it was a little bit of extra work that really didn't seem to need to be there, but I do appreciate that. So thank you very much. Those are the only questions I have.
How about any other board member? I just have one last question, and that is do you need that second driveway to Old Spanish Trail for the RV structure? Is the sole purpose of that additional driveway, the RVs themselves? Or might the connection from the existing paved area be sufficient for that RV?
If, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, if I could speak to that real quickly here. So one of the things that you can really see here with these arrows and with the contours is that this is where this drainage path goes. And in discussions with Mr. Moss and designing this. This has always been kind of a problem area on his lot. So when we get heavy rains, this gets this gets pretty pretty wet in through here. So having this other access, he can still come in here. Make negotiate this turn and then back the vehicle in in here without having to get into this area here, so.
Okay, okay, we're really not here to approve or disapprove that other driveway. So I just asked out of curiosity.
Right, right.
So I think we are, we we've gotten enough from you regarding the the purpose of the variance and all the information that we would need surrounding that. I want to thank you both for providing that and and for your comments with respect to the possible condition that might mitigate the the structure. I want to ask if there's anybody else in the audience that is here to speak to this case either in favor or in opposition. I'm not hearing anything, so I'm assuming there is nobody else present. So unless I hear an objection for from another board member, I'm going to close the hearing. And ask the board for discussion, for comments, for a motion. And if if there's a motion and now I I want to repeat the option still is that a motion could be made to continue this case. As staff has spoken to. Or to move forward with with hearing with the substance of this request today. Which we could do based upon a presumption that we have we have the information and that the grading plan if once it is submitted will not affect that the location. And I guess it's very true that if there is substantial change as a result of that grading plan, any approval today might be subject to a re-review. So that is a risk that the the owners and his representative are are going to take, but we may be inclined to take action today. So I want to open it up to any other board member to respond to any or all of that.
Mr. Chair, Bruce Dawson. Yeah, I would be willing to move in favor of granting a motion or motion to grant. But I'm not sure I have an entire list of all the conditions that you were talking about during the your initial priest presentation or Mr. Garcia and Mr. Moss's presentation. You read said something about color of the building and a few other things. Is that the only thing that you were concerned about was having the color of the building on there?
Well, there were two things. There was the color of the building and then the vegetation surrounding of the building. The color of the building, Mr. Moss indicated was a well, similar to the building to the color of the existing residence, which was a gray type of color on the roof. Now, I don't know that he meant, and we can maybe get see clarification of this, the entirety of the building, the size of the building. So maybe we do need to get clarification on that, but the second matter was vegetation. And if I were writing it, making the motion, I would say a requirement to vegetate with at least five trees surrounding the southerly and east sides of the the new building. With trees of at least fifteen gallons each of a native vegetation type. Does does that make sense?
Yeah, does.
Now, I want to admit, I don't understand completely the color matter, so if I can, Mr. Dawson, can I ask at this point, Mr. Moss, since he he's the one speaking to the color? Mr. Moss, can you answer this? The gray color you referred to, was that merely the roof of the new building? Being a color similar, if not exact, an an exact match to the color on the roof of the main structure? Or were you referring to all sides of the building?
I would do all sides. I was already planning to do the roof, the same color as the walls. Just because I I knew the neighbor was there. I didn't want to do the gavel room, which is what is typical on those buildings. So that they didn't have to worry about any kind of reflection on that. So we can make it all sides.
Okay, all sides and the roof being of a gray, being the same as the gray on the main structure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good. You made it real easy. Mr. Dawson, do you are you comfortable with all that?
Yeah, I can. With that in mind, I can certainly form a a motion.
Why don't you do that?
Okay. This is, I I move to grant the following variances in the case of C ten twenty two dash zero nine Moss RV Garage. And want to allow the detached garage to be constructed with an increased height of twelve, from twelve to eighteen feet, eight inches as measured from the design grade to the midpoint between the eve and the ridge of the roof. And to allow the combination gross floor area of all accessory structures, two hundred square feet or larger, to exceed fifty percent of the combined total gross floor area of the principal structure. All as shown on the submitted plans, subject to the following conditions. An NPPO waiver shall be submitted along with this recent middle of the plans. The prior to issuance of the building permit and approved grading plan shall be required. The evidence presented to the board shows that there are special circumstances which are not self imposed.
Dawson, did you mean to include these other conditions then?
I'm getting there.
Okay.
Evidence presented, the board shows that there are special circumstances which are not self imposed, which are applicable to the property and support the granting of the variances. And set forth in the staff board board of adjustment findings, one through seven, and specifically one. Minimum of five trees, fifteen gallons each, native vegetation should be planted around the structure. And the color will be a gray matching, a gray matching the structure on all sides and the roof.
Okay.
That is my variance. Or my motion, pardon me.
Well, thank you very much. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay. Ms. Hubert, thank you. Your motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, the motion carried unanimously. So that completes that matter. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, and thank you, Mr. Moss. That concludes the matter. You are excuse at this point, we are going to move on to the very last case then.
Chair Chairman Marks, Chairman Marks, I apologize. This is Roy Lesko with City Attorney's Office. I just wanted to clarify for the record that the the two conditions you you discussed involving the paint of the trees around are and were intended to be as part of the variance conditions rather than the reasons for granting variance. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. My yes, that is correct. That's my my apologies for getting there. I should have put them in where Mr. Marks indicated I should, but I didn't. And I apologize for that, but that was the intention.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dawson. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, Mr. Castro, we have one more case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Our third case for today is seat and dash twenty two dash ten. Night second dwelling unit, David Knight, seven twenty North Alder Avenue, C one. The applicant's property is an approximately one four acre site, Zone C one commercial. And is developed with one single family dwelling and one detached storage structure. The kin is proposing to expand and convert the existing storage building to a second dwelling unit. The applicant is requesting the following variance. How a second dwelling unit with a side perimeter yard setback reduced from ten feet, six inches to six inches as measured to the south lot line, all as shown on the submitted land plans. In related plan reviews, the engineering section of Planning and Development Services Department has no objection or advertisements. The Historic Preservation Office of Planning and Development Services Department has the following comment regarding the proposed project. The main house is a contributing resource to the John Spring Neighborhood Historic District. The detached structure that is proposed for modification is listed as non-contributing element. The secondary building is setback and the modifications should not adversely impact the eligibility of it. I would recommend the windows on the secondary building are simplified so that the primary historic structure stands proud. Planning and Development Services has no objection to the applicant's requested variance. It is the opinion of staff that there are special circumstances applicable to the property that the granting of the variance would not constitute the special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which such property is located. And that the variance is the minimum needed to afford relief and the least modification possible of those UDC provisions which are in question. Today, we have received a total of zero tests and zero approvals. And Mr. Chair, members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. I don't have any questions. Do any board members have a question of Mr. Castro? Hearing none, I will move forward to the petitioner. The petitioner's presentation at this point is the petitioner present.
Yes, sir.
The petitioner is present. Oh, there we go. Okay, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state your name and address for the record?
Dan Maher. And the address is two seven two three East Linden Street, eight five seven one six in Tucson.
Your last name is Madder.
Maher, M A H E R.
Okay, could are you the petitioner? Are you the property owner?
I'm petitioning on behalf of the property owner who is also on the call.
Okay, so what is your role if you're the petitioner and not the property owner?
The design professional.
Okay, okay, very good. Are you an architect?
I am.
Okay, okay, thank you. Why don't you proceed with your presentation?
Okay. Wow. For some reason, it is not allowing me to share my screen here. I can I can speak to the the plans that were part of the the docket. So the property is located at seven twenty North Alder is an existing building that has an existing secondary structure that was permitted at the time of construction, but the permit was never closed out. The the owner of the property is requesting a variance to do in addition to make it a secondary dwelling. The applicant also owns the property directly south of the of the property. And there will not be any additional encroachment on the property line as per the the drawings that were submitted to the city of Tucson. Perfect, thank you. Appreciate that. So as you see in the lower right hand corner, there's the existing building which is going to be renovated. And then there will be in addition to the west side of the building. The encroachment will basically be an extension of the existing building and will not encroach any further as listed in the application, any walls either modified or newly constructed will be fire rated to meet any separation requirements.
So let me ask the setback adjustment is not is it for just the addition to that secondary dwelling or is it for the dwelling unit itself?
So it's it's just for the addition in that the previous building was permitted. Where it created an issue for the city of Tucson was that permit was never closed out at the time of final completion. So it still showed as open in the city of Tucson's records, but that was approved at one point. And there's some question as to how that kind of took place, but I that's I don't know that that's relevant. So the the request is is simply for the new addition.
Got you, okay. So are you done with your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. Let me ask board, the board members present are, do you, any of you have any questions for the? Petitioners representative? Hearing none, I don't have any questions. So I'm gonna. Thank you for your presentation and. Does Mr. Pagney actually have anything? I see his name on my screen. Does that mean that he?
No. No questions, thank you.
Okay. Let me just ask the virtual audience, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Either in favor or in opposition to this request? So I've not heard any. I'll assume nobody else wishes to speak. I think we have heard all that we need, so I will close the hearing and I'll turn to the board to consider this matter. For discussion, for comment, or for a motion. Does anybody have anything to add to that?
I have no additions, but I'd be willing to make a motion since I seem to be in a, in a zone.
Okay, Mr. Dawson, why don't you do it?
I move that we grant the following variance in the case of C dash, C ten dash twenty-two dash ten. One allow the dwelling unit with side perimeter setback reduced from ten feet six inches. To six inches as measured from the south property line, all as shown on the submitted plans. Subject to no following, no conditions. The evidence presented to the board. Shows that there are special circumstances which are not self-imposed. Which are applicable to the property and support the granting of the requested variance. That would be my motion.
Did you want to speak to the findings?
Oh, certainly. The, that sits forth in the staff report, order of adjustment findings, one through seven, and. No additional findings of the various. With the conditions. Will not be material detrimental to public welfare or injurious to other properties. Or improvements in the neighborhood and is the minimum necessary to provide relief.
Okay, Mr. Dawson, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that. Motion.
Mr. Pagney, thank you. So we have a motion that's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. So. To the petitioner's representative, that concludes this matter. Congratulations and you are excused. And to staff, we have one more item we have. Mr. Castro, do you want to introduce the last item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last item we have for today. Is a request for continuance of case ten dash twenty-one. Dash zero nine T E P keynote to D M P. One thirty-eight kilobolt transmission and upgrade, which is an appozoning administrator. Determination pertaining to U D C section five point five point four point B. We have the, the representatives with T P. Present today to present their, their continuance.
Let me, before I go to him or her. Ask you. Fast, what are our options today? This, this is a matter that was. Acted upon by the zoning administrator with presumably a time limit. Presumably that time limit is expiring or has expired. And it is before the Board of Adjustment today. Because I presume the code allows a time limit established by a zoning administrator to be extended. By the Board of Adjustment. Although I'm not certain of that, so I'd like your, your concurrence to that, to that comment. And if that is the. The reason we are hearing this. Do we have any option other than to approve this time extension? Is there any reason for us to hear? Anything in particular before we would make such a decision?
Mr. Chair, those are questions and actually I will defer to Mr. Lusk who has his hands up.
Okay.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, I just wanted to sort of provide some context since. Since it's been quite some time that this matter's been pending before the board. What this is, is a, a, an appeal from the zoning administrators termination related to some. Construction that T P was planning in the right way and whether or not it was required to be undergrounded or not. That determination was made sometime last year. And T P timely appealed that determination which they're allowed to do under the code. They then, we be entered into negotiations with the city of Tucson to resolve the matter. Those negotiations are ongoing at this time. But the, the board does have the ability to, the zoning administrator has the ability to, to defer the. Hearing for a certain period of time. That time has expired, but the board does have the discretion to continue. The matter at their discretion with the, with the applicants or the appellant's. Permission or consent. In this case, the motion was made by T P, so therefore they're, they obviously have manifested their consent. So it's entirely up to the board whether to grant the continuance or not.
And they've asked for a six-month time period, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And that is from. Ha, has, has, was there a time limit or you're, you're, I think you indicated that. There actually was not an approval one way or another. There, the matter was continued prior to a. A decision being made?
So, so just to, just to clarify, Chairman, this is not a variance. It is a, a, in one of the rare cases in which a zoning administrators. Determination is being appealed to the boards. The board is acting in its appellate, appellate duties. And therefore, the process is generally that the board would take that matter. And, and conduct a public hearing in which they would determine whether or not the zoning administrator was correct in that determination. That hearing has not occurred because it has been continued initially by the zoning administrator. And then prior in last, last year. It was also, or not last year, I'm sorry, earlier this year, it was continued. On, on the board's motion. Or on the, on T P's motion and granted by the board, excuse me.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So at this point. We have the ability to vote in favor of a continuance. For six months. From. Whatever that date might be. And at the end of the six months. Does this matter then come back to us for a hearing possibly, or does it go back to the zoning administrator?
It would go back to, it would come back to the board because at this point, the board, it has jurisdiction over the matter because it's an, it's an appeal. So the board would have to eventually determine the appeal in order for device divest itself of jurisdiction. Or, if, unless the, unless T P were to. Did voluntarily dismiss the appeal.
Okay, so we have. One option here today, and that is to act upon a request for a continuance.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. So let me turn to the board and. Well, we have somebody from T P that's here to speak to us, is that correct? Mr. Castro?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
I guess we will listen to that party. If that party can identify him or herself. We will then. Swear him or her in. Could you identify yourself?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yeah, and could you raise your right hand?
Certainly.
Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth? And could you identify yourself by name and by address?
Certainly, is, and, and am I, is, is my video showing up? Okay, great. My name is Jeffrey Gross. I'm with the law firm of Barry Riddell. Sixty-seven fifty East Camelback Road, Suite one hundred, Scottsdale, Arizona, eight five. Two five one, and I represent T P. In this matter.
Okay.
And, and in, in attendance, on the line as well as Clark Reiner from, from T P.
Okay.
And, and I appreciate the comments, the questions, the comments from Mr. Lusk and Mr. Castro. They are correct. We're here on a, an appeal of an interpretation. Of the zoning ordinance, the U D C by the zoning administrator. Involving the undergrounding of certain transmission lines. Back in June, we requested a six-month continuance because T P and the city of Tucson. Leadership had been working together to try to resolve the appeal. So we asked for a six-month continuance in June. It would expire. In December. And so we do not have a hearing date. In fact, I understand as of today that there are, will be no hearing in December. But we wanted to come to the board in advance. To make sure that we have requested a continuance in advance of the, of, of the hearing. Just to make the process more efficient, so we're not showing up on the day of the hearing. And, and forcing both T P and the board to. To educate themselves in the merits. Hopefully, we can, we can get the continuance or requested. We appreciate the board's patience and consideration in the past. We want one more, we're asking for one more. Continuance until, until June. To allow the parties, the, the T P and the city of Tucson leadership to continue their negotiations. To resolve this matter. We're pleased to report. That we've made substantial progress since June. T P and the city have been meeting on a nearly weekly basis for the last year or so. To discuss potential ways to resolve this dispute without the need for the board to consider the appeal. To date, the U D C has been amended to allow certain exceptions, special exceptions. For undergrounding of transmission lines that involves a process, a hearing before the. Examiner. So that is in place. The parties have also been discussing. Amending T P's franchise with the city. That will provide a mechanism for undergrounding that will try to resolve the concerns raised by the neighbors, concerns raised by the city. The concerns raised by T P in a way that's fair and equitable to everyone. The franchise discussions are still in. The, the negotiation stage. But the franchise and amendment also needs to be approved by the city council. These would be approved by the voters. We are hopeful that the city council. Will. Approve the franchise and by approving the franchise amendment, I mean. Agreeing to place the franchise, the amendment on the ballot. Because any franchise amendment has to be approved by the voters. We're hoping that that can be done. In May. So we would anticipate that if the voters approve the amendment. Then that will moot the issues in the, our appeal of the. The zoning administrators decision. That's the, that's the, the goal anyway. And, and so granting the request for a variance. Extending this into June to allow the May election to occur, so we know one way or another. Whether the electorate, electorate has approved this resolution. Would allow the, not only this matter to proceed or to, to be resolved. But also give the electorate a voice in making that occur by placing it on the ballot. As Mr. Castro told you, the U D C allows this board to grant a continuance at the request of the app. With the consent of the applicant. Here we are making that request, so we have that consent. There are no limits on the length of continuance, and in fact, the board in June agreed to a six-month continuance. To get us further towards resolution of this matter. We think there's good cause. We're going to continue to work together with the city to try to resolve this matter that's. Amicable and works in everybody's best interest. We understand that the city agrees that a continuance is appropriate. Or, or at least has no objection to the, the continuance. And therefore, we would ask the board to grant T P a continuance. Until June of twenty twenty-three, at which point, if there is no. If, depending what happens with the election, hopefully every thing goes, goes smoothly, this appeal goes away. But at that point, then we can take up the, the appeal of the interpretation.
Is it fair to say that if we grant the continuance? And the negotiations that you're involved in do come to a, a point of completion successfully. As far as you're concerned. And the matter is, is then put before the electorate and that takes place in May hypothetically. And there is a favorable response by the electorate. That this continuance and the appeal, would it therefore be moot? Would it? Therefore just go away, or would you still need to be heard by the Board of Adjustment at some point?
If everything goes the way that we would like it to go, the negotiations are favorable. The city council approval is favorable, the, the election is favorable, then we would anticipate withdrawing the appeal.
Okay, that's clear. Okay, I don't have any further questions and I am very willing to support a continuance. I have no further questions. Do any other board members have any questions of the? Representative in front of us today? And hearing none. I presume we are satisfied with the information you've provided. I'm going to turn to the board and I'm going to ask, is there any board member that is? That wishes to make a motion at this point?
This is Lee Pagni.
Yes.
I will move, I will move that we provide the continuance.
So your motion is to approve the six-month continuance which would extend the time limit to June of twenty twenty-three. If that's correct, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. The continuance is granted. So good luck on that to those at T P.
Thank you.
So, um, Mr. Castro, I think our hearing today is, uh, over, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Um, we don't have any other business items to discuss.
Okay, well, thank you and thank, thanks to all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
You.
Thanks.
Thank you.